All right, our, we have a special guest tonight that Madeline Harris has invited to do our pledge, and we're pleased to, I guess, recognize Noel Edward Gentry III. Is that right? Is Noel Edward Gentry Jr. here?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. Well, I'm a junior, and you and I are simpatico, okay? All right. And this is Trey Gentry, who's with Troop 456 of the North Boulevard Church of Christ, and he's working on a Citizenship and Community Award with the Boy Scouts, and we're very pleased that you're going to do that. And first, Trey, before we do that, we're going to bow our heads for a moment of silent prayer, and then we will have you step up and lead us in the pledge. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, Mr. McFarland, why don't you lead us in our prayer or a moment of silence, and then we'll turn it over to Trey and get started.
Okay. Go bow your heads. Father, I thank you for this night that we get to come and represent the citizens of Murfreesboro. Thank you for the members on this council and their willingness to serve. We thank you for the staff members and the tireless work that they put in representing the citizens. Lord, just help us make decisions that will make this city a better place. Help us make decisions that will benefit our residents and give us the wisdom to be able to make those decisions judiciously and fairly. Thank you for what you're doing for us and the way you love us. Amen.
Amen. Trey?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, February the 6th, 2014. And Trey, we appreciate you leading us and bringing your dad with you tonight, and we're certainly very proud of all our scouts and the efforts they make in our community and the effort it makes for you in the future. So I think this leadership is an excellent role to take on early in life, and I appreciate that. One of these days, maybe you'll stick around and run for mayor if you'd like to, at least for the council. How about that? Okay, good. I got your promise on that solemn one. And Ms. Harris, we appreciate you asking him to do that and leading the charge there, so thank you very much for doing that. One little announcement tonight. We had a very enthusiastic meeting, a first meeting of our Citizens Government Academy that's led by Ms. Logan, and we certainly appreciate the, I guess, they had 22, is that right, that were here the other night, Monday night, for our first meeting, 5:30 to eat food. It's always good to gather folks and have a little food, and then they went on and had their first class in our Citizens Government Academy. It's a tremendous class for the academy. There's lots of enthusiasm there, and we hope that any and many of our interested citizens will consider joining our next classes when we offer those. We usually do that about two times a year. It's a great opportunity to learn about city government and the services we deliver and the outstanding folks who work with our City of Murfreesboro staff, and we certainly appreciate the interest in taking on that task. It's something that many have wanted to do for a long time. I believe Vice Mayor, you worked on getting that fired up for us, didn't you? So I appreciate that. We all did. You're exactly right. But Ms. Logan took it by the horn, so an exciting kickoff for our Citizens Academy, our second class. So look forward to possibly joining in in the future with those Citizens Government Academy classes for the City of Murfreesboro. Council members, on your consent agenda, item one, there is a substitute page two to that Title VI update, and I'm sure all of you read that update on Title VI requirements, and I think it's outstanding preparation that went into that, and I certainly want to appreciate Nellie Patton and our Transportation Department led by Mr. Richardson. There's some tremendous information there, and it talks about our Rover service and what we've done since 2007 when it starts. So there is a substituted page two to that report as you consider the consent agenda tonight. And also, item G in the consent agenda should be moved down to the new business area, and we'll get into that after our presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So if you'll move item G out of the consent agenda and move it down to new business, and that'll be item four changed, and we'll get to that in just a few minutes. But otherwise, you have the consent agenda with the substituted page two and all those other items before you. Are there any questions or comments regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as I have changed it?
So moved. Second.
All right. Mr. Gilli, Mr. Young, thank you very much. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You also have the minutes of the January 16th, 2014, regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to be made to those minutes as they are presented? If not, is there a motion that we approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Young, Mr. Gilli, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
And now we'll have a presentation from Mr. Jimmy Jobe of Jobe Hastings and Associates with regards to Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. This is one of the items of business that we look forward to every year, and I remember when I started with the city 12 years ago, your daddy gave the first report. So time marches on, Jimmy.
Time does.
And we certainly appreciate you being here and leading this little discussion of our annual financial report. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We do appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and perform our audit each year. I don't think it'll hurt anyone's feelings if I give an abbreviated version of this report, but I'll try and do that. We did and do appreciate the great assistance we get in the Finance Department from Melissa Wright and Aaron Tucker, and they do a great job of cooperating with us and helping us in performing this audit. It is a major undertaking with the number of hours that we spend down here. As you might imagine, the number of transactions that run through the city is probably in the hundreds of thousands, and it takes quite a bit of time. I would report that this year, as in the past, we've issued a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion. The city's report from last year once again got the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 15th straight year, and that's an honor given by a group of Government Financial Officers Association for reports that meet their high standards, and for 15 years, the city has won that award. So I think that's something to be proud of. Going to just discuss just a little bit about the audit process, tell you how that is accomplished. The purpose of the audit, of course, is to, for the protection of the stakeholders, the citizens, and you as the council, the oversight body, to give some assurance that the financial reporting that comes from the city, that the citizens are interested in and that others rely on, is issued and is fairly stated, and that's what the opinion is for, is to give our assurance of that. Part of the process, and as I mentioned, there's so many transactions that we can't possibly look at every transaction during the year. So part of our strategy is to assign the most experienced people that we have to this audit. Suzanne Vannever and Molly Pope have headed up this audit, and between them, they have over 50 years of experience. So we think that's important to this audit. And what we do is try to identify the areas of risk that we would like to focus on during the audit. Part of that involves a meeting that we have at the initial, at the inception of the audit, where we discuss the processes of the city and various aspects and things that we've done in the past that tend to show us where those areas that we should focus on, and that's a big part of our planning and doing the audit. And every year, we add some level of unpredictability by changing those procedures and looking at, focusing on different areas to perform the audit. Another area that we focus on is we interview and actually talk to many different people throughout the city and different departments, and that's important to get their perception of where they think there might be issues or things that we should focus on, areas that could lead to improvements and that sort of thing. And as we go through that process, we make recommendations as we see fit, and the Accounting Department is always very cooperative in listening and listening to our advice and going with those recommendations. And I'm just going to point out just a few items, not going to get into too many numbers, but one thing, this report is on the website, it's available to anyone who's interested at the city's website, so you can access it there. One of the easiest ways to get an overview of the financial picture of the city is to go to page three in this report, which is called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This gives a good overview of the city's financial performance for the year, and it gives a lot of good information on financial highlights and just an overview. So that's a good place to start if anyone's interested in getting an overview of the city. If you go to page 26, which is right behind Government-Wide Financial Statements, just want to point out on there that the total assets of the city as of June 30th, 2013, were almost $1.5 billion. Now, that includes all infrastructure, including water and sewer infrastructure, it includes any road-type assets, all the fixed assets of the city. So it was just $25 million short of $1.5 billion. And on page 28, another item of interest is in the General Fund as of June 30th of 2013. The, if you'll notice at the bottom of the page, unassigned fund balance. That's, fund balance has several components. Sometimes fund balance is restricted for specific purposes. The unassigned balance is kind of like a rainy day fund or an unassigned balance that can be utilized if necessary. That balance at June 30th was over $46 million. So what that says, the city is in a strong financial position and continues to be. Now, just as an overall summary of the audit, including any recommendations we had, if you go to the back of the report on page 163, this gives an overall summary of our results for the audit. In an audit of this size, there's going to be some recommendations, and there are a few of those back there. As I said, the Accounting Department works hard to eliminate any of those that we do find, and they're very cooperative in that respect. And as I said, I was going to be brief, so if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
Trey, have you got any questions? We're going to have a test now. I'm just kidding. All right. Council members, you've had this brief discussion, and I believe you've had this audit for the past, at least for the past week. Are there any questions or comments that you would like to share with the council and the public, or any questions you'd like to give to Mr. Jobe pertaining to their audit?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Young, yes, sir.
Mr. Jobe, on the rainy day fund or the fund balance, is there any criteria of a percentage that we need to keep that maintained to?
Well, I don't think there's any rule of thumb measure. You know, some experts would say some percentage of your annual budget, and, you know, the annual budget for the General Fund was some, let's see what that...
It was a little over $100 million last year, I believe, $108 something.
I'll add while he's looking that up that our financial policies require us to keep a percentage of our fund balance in relation to our revenues, and that's between 15 and 40 percent. It's just a loose number to make sure we don't let it go below that.
Yeah, this would be 46 percent of that.
We're well over our financial policy requirement.
And certainly, you know, one of the things that we look at with fund balance, it's hard to give an absolute number in terms of a recommendation because in a community like Murfreesboro where we're growing very rapidly, that fund balance can provide a cushion for a large capital expense if we chose to do that. So it is something we keep an eye on, but the fact of the matter is, in this budget, we had planned to use fund balance to, at the end of the budget year. Not only did we not touch fund balance, but we added $2 million to the fund balance. So that certainly shows that there were strong financial performances past year.
And it's currently allowing us to front the money for the school project that we're building, the new school, but we haven't borrowed the money yet. So I'm using cash we have now to fund that project until the money has been borrowed.
And that's typically how projects are funded. They're funded in advance of getting the debt, and not all cities would be able to do that without this kind of fund balance. So it's very prudent, I think, to have that type of balance.
Well, we hear so much about debt, 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 but our debt is at 50 percent of our fund balance, which is extraordinarily good.
Right.
Well below what a legal margin would allow.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Jobe while we've got him here?
Just a comment, Mayor. I'd just like to thank Mr. Jobe and his firm for the phenomenal job they do year in and year out working on this, and thank Melissa and her staff for the major role they play in putting this together as well.
Thank you. We appreciate, we appreciate the comments they give us, anything that helps make our internal control procedures stronger. We try to take that into advisement and do what we can.
And Ms. Wright, I would like to say that this is a perfect example on why, once again, you and your staff received the distinguished award that you received year after year after year, when you jumped in with that answer. It just shows us what a great staff we have, and we really appreciate the job that you and your staff did in getting the information to Mr. Jobe for them to compile this 163-page report. And I want you to correct me on something, Mr. Jobe. When I first, my first year on the council, I remember going home after you did your presentation, and my mom was just beside herself because she was a math whiz, so she loved numbers. If she could eat numbers, she would eat them every meal. But I remember her telling me that years ago, that your firm was so good on governmental auditing, that your firm was printed in a national magazine, and in that article, they actually used the City of Murfreesboro's budget as an example of what a great job you do. Is that correct?
There was a, there was a research book that's issued every year that gives examples of how to do reports for cities, and it's a national publication, and the city's report was used in that one year. Thank you for pointing that out, but...
I know she said you would be too modest to ever say that to us, but you do an excellent job, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
On page 88, I believe, begins a section, Required Supplemental Information. Briefly talk us through our pension trust funds. The City of Murfreesboro has its separate pension trust fund. We're not part of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. If you would talk about it and that perhaps the growth of the value of that fund over the previous year or so.
Yes, sir. Actually, the city, in this report, it involves three separate pension funds. The Murfreesboro Electric Department, of course, has a separate pension fund. The city employees here under the general government have their pension fund, and then the teachers in the school system is involved in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. But the City of Murfreesboro Employees Fund is a trust fund, and you can see the growth over the last 10 years there of that fund. It's well-funded as far as meaning that there is no liability to, it's funded as you go. The city funds that pension plan, so that means that that plan is secure, and you'll see the growth from $54 million 10 years ago to $101 million in this last fiscal year. And like I said, the liability itself is funded, so it's pay-as-you-go type of fund.
Mayor, this is going to change in our next budget, I believe, fiscal year 14, 15? 15. Where some of these numbers will no longer be reported separately back here, but they'll actually be put in our regular numbers, and that's going to change the look of our report a great deal. As Mr. Jobe pointed out, the amount our actuary requires us to fund, recommends us to fund, is what we fund every year. There's a timing delay because we're already into our next fiscal year before we get that number, so it's budgeted the next year. We've always budgeted at least what they've said. If they've recommended a decrease, we didn't change our number. We left it where it was. But with the new reporting requirements, there will be some liability numbers based on their computations, that all that'll be lifted and put in the front of the report. So that will change. But we've always funded at least what our actuary has recommended for us.
And this shows about 85 percent of what we expect the liabilities to be. We're already funded. That was as of 7/113, and we've had some growth in the assets since that time, so...
We're about $112 million at the end of January.
Right. So I want our residents and taxpayers and business owners to know that our pension requirements are nearly fully funded actuarially, and it's a significant number. I know a lot of people here nationally about big cities, and we're certainly not a big city, but cities not being funded actuarially sound. We are, and I certainly appreciate the staff and the efforts of previous councils in making sure that was done.
Ms. Wright, is that a GASB requirement, a new GASB, is it because...
Yes, it is. They're requiring our reporting to be changed for GASB.
I got you.
It might be a good time to also point out that in addition to this defined benefit plan, we have a defined contribution plan for all employees that were hired after July 1st, 2010, and so those employees are not included here. They're part of our regular funding, and they don't have a separate plan that you can look at theirs because they self-direct their investments.
So those numbers are not reflected in this report?
No, sir.
Those are held separately?
Those are held separately.
All right. Other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. McFarland?
I just have really two comments on page eight. Every year, I'll look at this changes in net position, and, Mr. Jobe, the thing I think that's looked at to say, this is hard to believe, but, you know, we collected more in 2013 on our revenue than we did on 2012, but yet we spent less money than we did. Our governmental expenditures were less in 2013 than they were in '12, so, you know, from a council standpoint, we had more come in and we actually spent less than we did in the prior year. So when we're talking about fund balance on our budget last year, was it two? What was the fund balance number that we budgeted?
I think we budgeted five.
So, and we actually added two, so we're looking at a $7 million swing?
To the positive.
To the positive, which is significant. The other thing, you know, something from the accounting side that we look at, the recommendations that we get from you guys on the back end, do we feel like the recommendation on procurement and purchasing, that our new position that we have coming on will help alleviate some of those?
Yes, we met with the auditors to talk about that specific recommendation, and part of it was a dynamic situation with buying computer software where, when they went to go to the internet site to verify the pricing, as you can imagine, when you look at computers or televisions, the pricing of that changes rapidly, and so they weren't able to go look on the computer site to see the price of that piece of equipment because the model had been upgraded and the price might have gone down. So internally, we've made some changes to take a snapshot of that so we can document that the price paid was the price on the website. But, you know, one of the things that we're going to look at with the new purchasing position, and we're actively working on that recruitment, is to really come up with a comprehensive system for the city that we think will serve us better and continue to enhance our controls.
So when we look at our net assets, the net liabilities, we're actually looking at a $977 million. So if you looked at a loan-to-value, we're exceedingly in good position from our assets to liabilities.
Absolutely, yes.
It's a lot of commas.
Vice Mayor?
Well, for the public and the rest of the council, one of my favorite pages, I think, always is page 10, which, if you go on the website and look at page 10, it's pretty educational that that page tells you the operational costs of a department is going to add to the revenue. So that's interesting.
All right. Thank you, council members. Anything else before I release Mr. Jobe? All right. Do we need a motion to accept?
It'd be okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gilli and Ms. Harris. Thank you very much for the motion and second to accept this Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, members of your firm. We're very pleased with that work and look forward to continuing the work with you.
Thank you.
All right. Council members, item G, which was in our consent agenda, has been moved under New Business. Mr. Dana Richardson, our Transportation Director, will talk about that, and those are pages 79 through page 121 in our documents that were presented with the agenda, and that's quite a lengthy list of things there. So, Mr. Richardson, you might begin your presentation now.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. I have for you this evening a proposed agreement between the City and Wiser Consultants for Design Services for the relocation of Lidle Street between Broad Street and College Street. We have begun the Broad and Memorial Overpass project, and one of the things that necessitates us moving forward with this secondary project is the fact that College Street, where it currently intersects with Memorial Boulevard, will be closed as a result of that project, and we needed a way to reestablish an access into downtown to handle the volume that would be redirected away from that intersection after its closure. While you may not have seen the diagrams and so forth, I've laid out on your table previously, this is in fact something that we've been working on for the last five-plus years, and we were waiting to make sure that we had T-Dots designed for the project laid out well so that we would know exactly how to coordinate. We have also been coordinating the utility relocations with this project even before we've started. So we've known this was coming and have made preparations to actually move forward on be functionally practical to work. There was not enough left turn stacking from Broad Street into the downtown and reopening Lidle Street. So what we have done is look to move that about 200 feet further southeast. And what that would also do is basically split the distance between the intersection of Broad and Main and the intersection of Broad and Memorial. So that would be right in between them. In relocating that to accommodate the traffic, we've also been able to, I think, reestablish some accesses back to the businesses in that area that were concerned about the loss of their access with the closure of College Street. And it also gives us, I think, a really good opportunity to address concern and what we've heard before from the downtown business owner associations and the Main Street Board is to provide a more or a better identity point coming into the downtown. This certainly provides that opportunity by buying a couple of properties in proximity to that area and also the establishment of the roundabout as a traffic control. Think that would be a grand aesthetic addition to the area. The contract that you have before you is in the amount of $183,401.75. That is a not-to-exceed figure. Now, this is the base design contract. At time is of the essence in doing this, as in the Broad Memorial Project, we're currently in the process of moving utilities, and we have to get the design, especially down close to Broad Street, pinned down very quickly so that they can move forward with the design, or, excuse me, the actual relocation of the utilities, facilities not to interfere with the Broad Memorial Project. So that would be our first effort in that. I do have the illustrations, and if we put that up on the screen, this gives, I think, a good representation of the movement. The current Lidle Street, where it intersects Broad Street, is operated currently as a ride-in, ride-out. This was done many years ago. My recollection was in the late '80s, early '90s. I remember when we did it because there were a lot of accidents at this location, and we were forced to make that change. What this does is actually relocate the intersection down 200 feet further southeast. And if you can, you can't really see because it zoomed in a little bit, but it is equal distance between the Broad and Main intersection and the Broad Memorial. What this does is create some additional stacking distance for people turning left into this intersection. Otherwise, we would have a problem and a conflict with the Broad and Memorial Project. This is the place that we were talking about before, where College Street is being closed at Memorial because of the ramps and so forth that are being built here and also the bridge that comes over in this area. This project is something that we've been discussing with the current owners of the property, and I have also included an illustration in your handout that shows the two properties that we're talking about acquiring to facilitate this relocation. And this would be this existing Title Max property here and also the property that has three structures on it that's being used as an automotive service center at this point. And I've had these discussions with property owners probably for five years, so this isn't anything new to them. And I think that they certainly are not opposed to doing this, and we are in the process of getting the appraisals and to see where we stand with that. So that's basically the crux of the project that I'm describing. I do have a recommendation for you this evening to approve the professional services agreement between the city and Wiser Company in the amount of $183,401.75, and this is, would be subject to the review of the legal department. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have about this project.
Questions for Mr. Richardson regarding this recommendation? As a matter of interest, was there a thought to that third property which joins the second?
The third?
That's 515. It's the building next to the three buildings there, which would go ahead and take in the rest of the Riverbank and Greenway.
We, that was not included in the concept design and basic layout. We were, I guess, intentionally trying to miss it to minimize the amount of acquisition necessary for the project, so...
So if Wiser looked at it and decided that you needed additional property, then that would be the time to...
It would. And let me say this, that also we've been approached by the owners of the old Red Rose Dairy with interest in potentially us acquiring that. This design, concept design, as you see, will necessitate some acquisition. You can kind of see where that property comes to a point in the intersection of College and Lidle. The project design would necessitate acquiring a piece of it, but not necessarily an entire take. But that is something that we will keep in mind and keep interested as we go forward in this. And if, you know, the council's interested in purchasing a different, additional piece, that may be something that's worth consideration. Really help the aesthetic quality of creating this entrance, that's for sure.
All right. Other council members? Mr. McFarland?
What happens, like, to the old portion of College? What do we plan on doing there?
The old portion of College, if you look in the concept plan, the old portion of College is going to be scarified and taken out. The places that are outlined in yellow is basically where College and Lidle will be tied back together.
Right. I mean, what, like, the road that used to be there when we get rid of that, are we thinking...
Oh, you're talking about the old Lidle Street?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Lidle.
Okay. Thank you. Don't know that yet because one of the things that we'll have to find out in the survey phase of this is how we originally acquired that. We don't know if we have an easement of Broadway or if we actually own that fee simple. If we actually own that fee simple, then it would be ours to dispose of. If we abandon it and it's only an easement, then it would go back to the joint and property owners. So we will backtrack and figure out how we acquired that whenever we did acquire that many years ago, I'm sure.
Good question. Other?
I have a question, Mayor.
Mr. Young, yes.
From the Lidle Street back up toward the square, what are the intentions of this to improve that three-block area?
I think that's an excellent question because we are certainly looking out much further in our long-range planning than just this. This is a priority now for, because we have to coordinate the timeframe with the Broad Memorial Project. I did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mayor Burgess. As you're aware, they're moving forward in their planning for the judicial building. That would take two blocks where the Daily News Journal is for their parking and also the block between Church Street and Maple Street along Lidle for the actual building. So that's two blocks. This is a block, and if you blow out that picture a little bit, that would really give you just a remainder, two blocks in between. So as a small future phase in conjunction with this and the judicial building project, we could basically have an improved facility all the way from Broad Street to Church Street. In an even broader sense, we have been talking for many years with MTSU about establishment of a larger link between the Greenway system downtown and MTSU for a more practical bicycle facility. One of the things that we're looking at in the design of this is the potential even to make that link part of our master plan in trying to provide that connectivity from MTSU into the downtown and also from MTSU even back to the Greenway system. Because as you can tell from the illustration, the Lidle Creek Greenway does come right down next to the roundabout. So that's a little longer-range plan, but we are looking at the entire length of this roadway from Broad Street to Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
I think improving that two-block, two- or three-block area would be monumentally important to our downtown. It would give a gateway to our beautiful square, the brand-new parking garage. This road is going to basically run right into it. And I would encourage managements to look at a plan to improve that, much like what we did on West Main Street.
Yes. We would love to turn that into, I guess, a larger project and coordinate that with not only the construction, but the timing of whatever happens with the judicial building.
Could you phase this into the first phase is getting the roundabout and that part done and then move right on up the street?
Absolutely.
In coordination with what the county's doing?
That's our intent. Yes, sir.
All right. Great.
Other comments regarding this recommendation? We have this contract with Wiser for approval.
Move for approval. Second?
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Young. And after we vote, we might ask you to give us a recap on the T-DOT meeting Monday night here regarding the bridge over Broad Street.
Be happy to.
All right. So let's call for the vote. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson, please continue.
Well, to give you a recap, we did have a community meeting for the Broad and Memorial Project. It was well-attended. I'm all guess. I haven't seen the sign-in sheets, but just looking spatially, it looked like we had over 100 people that were here. We did have a formal presentation at the beginning, and with the help of T-DOT, we presented the project, a little bit of the history, and also how we planned about, planned to go about doing the construction of this, the traffic implications and so forth. And after taking some more global questions, we did retire to the rotunda. We had a lot of stations set up outside and had a lot of illustrations. T-DOT brought their engineering staff down with a set of plans. We also had some of the aesthetic illustrations out there that showed the bridge designs, what that would look like, the landscaping. And in general, there were some concerns stated, and there were some things that we're still following up with to answer some specific questions. But my sense, the meeting was that it went well, and there was a, I think, a general acceptance of the project. So, and I would also, you know, like, take the opportunity to thank the Department of Transportation for all the work they've done on this and the help in setting this up. They did an excellent job, and I appreciate the partnership with them.
So T-DOT had their folks here, their engineers, and the contractor had folks here.
Yes.
Our urban environmental was here to point out the landscape and what we're going to do locally after the project is finished to try to maintain the landscaping. And I think our urban environmental folks do an excellent job there.
Yes, sir.
Do you have those sites, the websites, and how folks can? You can get automatic updates by going to, I think it's tn.gov/tdot/sr1.
I don't remember, but one of the things that the citizens here can do, if they'll go to our website, there is a direct link to T-DOT's website, and they do have a webpage set up specifically for this project that we would update and try to maintain as the project goes along.
And you can get alerts. Mr. McFarland, why don't you tell us what that is there?
It's, yeah, I went and, you can sign up, and they will email you
Yes.
updates on it. So it's www.tn.gov/tdot/sr1.
State Route 1.
Yeah.
Sr1. So anybody that wants automatic updates by email can get that. This is about a three-year project. First year and a half can, probably looking at utility relocation primarily and then moving the roadway on the west side first. Is that right?
They will build the outside ramps first and redirect the traffic and then build the interior part of it.
Okay. And hopefully, we'll get a lot of work done at night while those of us rest our weary heads, and while we're going to work, we'll see some real progress through the years. So anything else from council members I'd like to bring up? Thanks, Mr. McFarland, for that site. If not, we'll excuse you, Mr. Richardson. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate your long-range planning five years ago, huh? All right. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to the procurement of a Vocantis Interactive Voice Response IVR software. Mr. Gore, welcome.
Mayor Bragg, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to present this item for your consideration. I do have a PowerPoint that I want to go through that explains or reminds you of the background of this project and how it dovetails with our information technology initiatives. In September, we had competitive sealed proposals which were open for IVR, which stands for Interactive Voice Response. In October, we came before the council, and I received authority to negotiate up to $180,000 with the two shortlisted vendors. We did go through the shortlisting process. We went through demonstration scripts, and we actually found that the lesser-cost vendor offered us more flexibility and more benefit. And so that total amount is in the physical impact of only $97,508. So it's almost half of what we were authorized to move forward with. It surprised us, and, but I want to go through this real quick. This is a software project. This is going to piggyback onto our utility billing software, our new customer information system. It's going to be able to handle high-call volumes, service customers after normal business hours, take credit card payments via telephone, automate outbound call campaigns, and record customer service calls if there are complaints. It does create efficiencies and improve customer satisfaction or customer service. And I'm going to go through a business case for return on investment. It has a one-time cost of $46,000, a first-year maintenance of $9,300, and then years two through five, maintenance cost of $42,000. It does align with our effective utility management strategy to improve customer satisfaction, maintain financial viability, and have more operational resiliency and optimization. These are the areas that we did do a self-assessment that we identified are in need of improvement and thus where we're concentrating our efforts. Real quick, it's a little busy slide, but I'm trying to step you through where we've been. Step one, we did do an online credit card payment and over-the-counter credit card payment with Easy Pay. Step two, we've been, since June of last year, basically implementing a new customer information system. Step three, I was before you last month requesting a new mobile work order management system which took a paper process that we currently use, and that's turning it into a digital wireless process. This is step four, which is effectively, we're going to be able to connect our customers through the telephone. What does that mean? Well, they're going to be able to, we expect it to defer about 35% to 40% of our customer service phone calls. We currently have about 7,000 phone calls per month. I've made the assumption that about 20%, of those go to engineering. So that puts it around 5,600 or so that are actually customer service at our cashiers and customer service clerks have to handle. Those are anywhere from an account balance inquiry to new sign-ups, to move in, move outs. If someone has a leak investigation or they think they've got a leak at their house for us to go look, that's about 23 calls per hour, just over one every couple of minutes. But if we defer, which is the industry standard when they implement these IVRs, they'd expect about 35% of those calls to be deferred through the electronic IVR system. That's roughly 1,960 calls. Again, looking at the business model that the Vocantis software vendor supplied us, that's a $3 per call deferred. They actually said $4 per call deferred. We assumed $3 call deferred. And that's not that we get $3 deposited into our bank account every time we have a call that's avoided, but that does free up customer service clerks to basically perform other functions. I know a lot of folks don't, they don't like to wait on the phone if all they're asking for is their due date or their account balance or if they do want to pay. And there are certain folks that do need to talk to someone in person if they have a more complicated issue. So we don't want to overcomplicate the IVR. I think basically you would have a two-choice split at the beginning of the phone call. One would be, would you like to talk to somebody? Or the second option would be, would you like to see your account balance or make a payment? Very simple. It would take phone calls off of the customer service clerks and put them in contact with people that needed the more in-person contact. But using the $3 per call and the anticipated deferred calls, that really equals about a $75,000 savings or deferment of cost. Again, that's not hard cash. That's deferred cost. There are some sunk costs into our personnel, but we do expect to gain efficiency. There are some sunk costs into our, into our personnel, but we do expect to gain efficiencies. And through attrition, ultimately, if we do not need the level of staffers that we currently have, then if the efficiencies gained warranted not hiring someone who did retire, then that, that would be where we would, we would go. Again, the ability to make credit card payments over the phone, I'm going to show you a graph on the screen. You can see, these are the credit card payment totals that we've, we've seen since September of 2012. Basically, the online numbers continue to increase. The online credit card payments through the, through the web represent about 5.3% of our total payments now, and that's continuing to climb. And so, you have to understand, for every payment that's made online, that takes away a piece of mail that has to be opened and processed, and it also may mean less foot traffic. So, we do expect with the ability to pay with credit cards over the telephone, that we would also, that, that would, that could possibly represent another 5%. And again, it would just mean more efficiency and less time spent with customer service clerks. So, that's that particular system. I do want to go up, take one more step into our step five, which is our anticipated. We're going to be coming back to you with the business case for the advanced metering infrastructure. This takes our current manual process of meter reading, meter readers who manually go out to each meter every month to record that particular register of volume consumed to, that turns it into a, we're looking at a wireless digital process whereby each meter could be read every few hours, and that data could be brought back into the office, thereby totally changing, transforming our business operations in that regard. Meter readers could be reassigned to leak adjustments, or could be assigned to more field, technical areas, and, but that's, that's a large dollar amount. I'm just giving you a heads up, we'll be bringing that business case back to you. The great thing about the wireless reading, though, is we could actually let folks know about early leak detection. We all know with the current weather and how cold it's been, we've had a lot of line breaks. And obviously, people kind of know when the line breaks in the, in the wintertime, but there are times when a leak gradually creeps up on somebody. This particular system will be able to actually notify them before they're aware that they have a leak, because we'll be getting those hourly readings. So, it's a huge shift in ability to, to, to be customer-friendly and notify them that they may have a problem. This last slide is just more of a global. I just wanted, again, to kind of, we've, the city has done such a great job investing in their GIS system. This is a GIS kind of centric model, but we have been looking over here in this left-hand corner that I'm lower-left, which really deals with the customer interface and the customer interface information systems. We've done the Easy Pay. Step two, we've, upgrading our customer information system. We've added the Mobility Workforce Management. We're requesting the IVR, and to, down the road, or here in the short term, we're going to be looking at this AMI business case. So, this has all been founded on the Service Excellence Initiative that the city manager has challenged staff to, to move forward with, and so, we're really trying to engage our customers and give them more efficient tools to, to interact with us. So, with that, I would, I would request, if there's, I can stop here for questions, or I can move forward with the recommendation.
Will the new program email statements out?
It will, yes, I'm sorry. It will have e-presentment abilities. That's actually going to be part of the new utility billing software, not so much the, the IVR. But yes, the new CIS, we're using CIS Infinity. It's an advanced utility system product that we, basically, our go-live date is anticipated for March 24th right now. So, when we go live, we'll be running parallel with the, the old Cobal system and the new system, and when we're comfortable that the new system is, is performing optimally, then we will do the full switchover, and you will be able to get, if you, if we get the correct contact information, we'll be able to provide e-presentment, email you the bill.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Gore regarding this acquisition? So, you obviously recommend that we spend $180,000.
No, sir. It's actually, the contract we have is for 90, it's a five-year contract that totals $97,508. The first-year outlay would be a $55,346 commitment. This is the, the vendor that was less expensive, but when we did the demonstration scripts and interviewed both firms and discussed what functionality they had, the actual less-expensive vendor offered more functionality.
Oh, any questions, or is there a motion?
Have we heard the recommendation?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Mr. Washington, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you very much.
Always something new going on at Water and Sewer, right?
We're excited.
You just think it's the same old thing.
We got the plow, we'll get going.
And it's not. All right. We'll consider now recommendations of the staff planner with regards to scheduling public hearings to consider annexation progress reports for annexed areas affected six months for the intersection of Lebanon Highway and Cherry Lane, southwest of Blanton Drive, Memorial Boulevard, South Church Street, and Osborne Lane. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor, City Council. I'm afraid my presentation's not going to be as exciting as Mr. Gore's.
Oh, Mr. Lewis, please.
We'll do my best.
I'll do my best.
I know you will.
Excuse me. Public Chapter 1101 of 1998 requires that upon an expiration of six months after the effective date of an annexation and annually thereafter, until services have been extended according to such plan, a municipality must publish in a newspaper of general circulation a progress report for the extension of such services and any changes proposed therein. The law further requires that the legislative body of the municipality shall hold a public hearing on such progress reports after proper notice of a public hearing is in the newspaper. The annexations for the areas described below in my, in your report have been effective for at least six months. The areas include an area, an annexation of approximately 12.3 acres at the intersection of Lebanon Highway and Cherry Lane, the effective date is March 9, 2013. The annexation of approximately 3.27 acres southwest of Blanton Drive, the effective date is May 4, 2013. Annexation of approximately 3.6 acres along Memorial Boulevard, the effective date is June 8, 2013. The annexation of approximately 1.02 acres along South Church Street, the effective date is June 15, 2013. And the annexation of approximately 1.81 acres along Osborne Lane, the effective date is July 6, 2013. The planning staff recommends that the City Council schedule a public hearing to consider these progress reports and plans of services for these annexed areas, and attached in your agenda materials are copies of such progress reports and an illustration of each area. The council needs to schedule a public hearing and a date, a public hearing date, and authorize the city recorder to publish the public notice.
Ms. McCannan?
March 6.
March the 6th.
Ask the mayor, is he going to be in?
Council members, does March 6 meet with your approval? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Second.
Vice Mayor, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant Fire Chief with regards to bids for two custom-built Quint trucks and one custom-built pumper truck. Chief Jernigan, nice to have you with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city administrative staff. I'm here to ask for a bid approval for two custom-built Quint trucks and one custom-built pumper truck. Some of the background information on this is, the funds were allocated in the 2012 Capital Improvement Plan for the replacement of one ladder truck and two Telesquirts with equipment. These three vehicles are standby units and need to be replaced due to age and the service life. The new vehicles will be frontline units. Two of the frontline units will be replaced with and become standby units, and the third unit will remain in the frontline fleet. The 1982 ladder truck will, will be replaced with a custom-built Quint truck. $1,200,000 was included in the 2012 CIP for replacement of the ladder truck, including equipment. One 1990 Telesquirt will be replaced with a custom-built Quint truck. $950,000 was included in the 2012 CIP for replacement of the Telesquirt, including the equipment. The second 1990 Telesquirt will, will be replaced with a custom-built pumper truck. $750,000 was included in the 2012 CIP for replacement of the Telesquirt, including the equipment. The department currently has four aerials in service. The two Quint trucks will enhance our aerial coverage, giving MFRD a total of six aerials, and will also help the department maintain the ISO rating of number two. The bid process. The competitive purchasing process was followed for this item, and an invitation to bid was released to the public on November 17, 2013. Bidders were allowed to submit bids on each vehicle individually. Bidders were also encouraged to submit a total price for both Quint trucks and/or all three vehicles, reflecting any discounts that would, would apply if the bidder were to be awarded the contract for both Quint trucks or for all three vehicles. These bids do not include equipment. Equipment will be purchased separately. The city reserved the right to make a contract award or awards based on either a per-item price or the total bid price. In addition to advertising the ITB and posting it on the city's website, the city sent bid requests directly to five vendors. Four vendors submitted sealed bids, and the bids were opened on December 17, 2013. The city received the following bids. Of course, you can see the four bids there, and I'll just give you their total price of the, all three together, because that's what I ended up ultimately looking at. The Pierce Manufacturing, $2,114,227. Southern Emergency Products, $1,826,193. Toyn Incorporated, $1,967.35. Mid-South Bus Center did a no-bid on all of them. The low bidder on all three vehicles, Southern Emergency Products LLC, did not meet the specifications that we put out. Toyn Incorporated submitted the second lowest total bid on all three vehicles and did meet specifications. Staff recommends that the contract be awarded to Toyn Incorporated. The fiscal impact of this project, funds of $2.9, $2,900,000 are included in the 2012 Capital Improvement Plan for the replacement of these three vehicles. The remaining amount, after the low bid of $1,967,435, is deducted, is $932,565. Estimated cost of equipment for these vehicles is $900,000, resulting in a projected savings of $32,565. Our recommendation, it is recommended that City Council approve the lowest bid that met all specifications for the purchase of two custom-built Quint trucks and one custom-built pumper truck submitted by Toyn Incorporated. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right. Good job, Chief. Questions from the council regarding this recommendation?
I'm not familiar with the term Quint. What does?
Quint is based on the ladder that is on the top, the amount, total amount of ground ladders you carry, and the different equipment that is on that apparatus makes that a Quint.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I had that same question. And my, our continuing effort to keep up with whatever is going on.
Right, absolutely. I think releasing the battle.
Other questions or comments? All right, you have this recommendation before you. What are your wishes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, Vice Mayor, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. Very nice to have you before us tonight. Thank you. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Attorney with regards to the acquisition of property located at 608 West Main Street. Mr. Ives, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Recommendation tonight concerns a property, as you mentioned, at 608 West Main Street. This is fairly close to the bridge project and the Lidle Street, Lidle Street project, but has nothing to do with those. This is a separate matter. The owner of this property, well, this property sits adjacent to property that is now occupied by the Street Division of the Engineering Department, and also the Refueling Center there for city vehicles. It's immediately adjacent to that. The owner had approached the city a while ago about acquiring it. It has a vacant house that's in very bad shape and vacant for some time, and an outbuilding or two that are in equally bad shape. We had, we, we were working on, we had the property appraised by Greg Peck to, to determine a value. He basically gave us a value of the vacant lot, because the, the house has probably negative value, actually. We were working on a contract to bring to you and discovered a title problem. There is a one-fourth ownership that we have not been able to account for. And by we, I had asked Rick Mansfield to do the title search for us, because I wanted to be able to get title insurance for the city if the city elected to do that. So, together, we discovered this title problem. The lady who has the other, for sure, for sure has three-quarters of the title, has been paying taxes on it for over 20 years, so there should be no significant contest. But to be able to get title insurance, we need to either have a quiet title action in her name and then proceed with a contract, or simply condemn the property and have to do notice by publication, the same way we would do on a quiet title. We're recommending that we go forward with the condemnation. I think it'll be a little bit shorter, not much, and may cost a few dollars less, but there's not a great deal of difference. So, we would ask your approval to go forward to the condemnation. We would tender in the price that we had anticipated for the contract purchase price, and then do our notice by publication and go forward in that direction. Acquiring it that way, we will be able to get title insurance for the city if the city elects to do that.
All right. Questions for Mr. Ives regarding the acquisition of this property?
I would add that the Street Division has the equipment and personnel to take down the house and the outbuildings, and will be able to take those to the construction landfill. We will be able to do that as city staff, significantly less money than if we had to hire a contractor to do these. A larger building, we might not do, but this house and building is something that we can take down.
So, what is the value of this property on the tax rolls? Do you know?
I, I didn't, I, I may have that. I do have that. I believe.
You can get back to me on that.
Land market value is 36, 35,600. The appraisal was 45.
All right. All right, council members, you have this recommendation before you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Have we heard the recommendation?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution to establish the payment in lieu of tax for the Murfreesboro Electric Department for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Ms. McKinnon?
Mayor, members of the council, you've seen this resolution format before. As you know, the Electric Department pursuant to a formula makes payments in lieu of taxes to both the city and Rutherford County. The council needs to approve that. These figures are the appropriate ones, and staff would recommend that you approve the resolution.
All right.
Melissa wants the money.
All right. Questions regarding this pilot?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland.
Second.
Second. Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye.
This time, let's review any beer permit applications. Ms. Wright.
Mayor, there are three on your desk tonight. We have a special event beer permit application from the chamber for their monthly networking events, and there are various addresses and locations and dates on the, on that list. In addition to that, we have a location that's new to twenty-three fifty-seven Medical Center Parkway. It's a restaurant that, we've got our background check done, we're just lacking our building codes inspections. And then we also have a location at sixteen oh-seven Middle Tennessee Boulevard, which was a convenience store that had a fire, and because they didn't sell beer for a thirty-day period, their permit became void. They have now got that back where they can reopen and admit their codes inspection, so we would like to reissue that permit to them.
All right. Is there a motion? We approve these permits.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
Second.
Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
I'm staying.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye.
All right, you have the list of statements to be considered for payment. Any questions regarding the bills to be paid? And if not, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Gilli, Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to recommend to you a reappointment of Mr. Dana Richardson as the city's representative on the board of the Rutherford County Wayfinding Program, and that term would be three years, beginning January first, two thousand and fourteen, concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Now make this recommendation.
Let's throw something else on him while he's not here.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Second.
Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye.
Obviously, Mr. Richardson left the room. He gets to do it, right?
That's right. Is there anything else we can put on him while he's out of the room?
We'll try and think about some other things.
Let's get our chairman.
All right. Is there any other business from staff or the council to come before the council? Let me mention, this is Black History Month, and Tuesday at the new Student Union Building on the campus of Middle Tennessee State University, the annual Unity Luncheon will be held. Adults, twenty dollars; students, ten dollars. That's on the second floor of the new Student Union Building. If you haven't been there, it is a wonderful facility. And parking is going to be on the large Rutherford County lot with a shuttle. As you know, students are on the campus and they take parking places whenever they can, so if you get close to the building and can't get in, then go to that large Rutherford lot on the east side of the campus, and there'll be a shuttle bus taking people. So look forward to that Unity Luncheon for Black History Month on the campus of Middle Tennessee State University. Mr. Smotherman.
Mayor, just one thing. I was reading on the internet this morning, I believe it was Time Magazine, has Murfreesboro rated it in the top twenty cities, top twenty most romantic cities. So I think that with Valentine's approaching, it was one of two cities that, in Tennessee that made it on that list, and so you're doing good, Murfreesboro. Congratulations.
I think that's why they put this Amazon building over here, was to get all our Valentine's purchases in on time, so we could get to them very quickly.
I've done some research into that. The basis for that ranking is Amazon sales based on the sale of romantic novels, love story movies, and Barry White CDs. I'm proud owner of a Barry White CD.
You know, the additional duties of the city manager just cannot be delineated.
Or maybe he's got too much free time.
Possibility.
Mayor, I made a, a quick promise.
Yes, Mr. McFarland.
I've got two boys that actually have different birthdays that turned ten over the time we've met last in the past week, so they're faithfully watching tonight for me to say happy birthday to them.